Called to order the City Council meeting for the City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, July 20th, July 16th, 2019. It is now five o'clock. City Clerk, please call and roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Tom Better.
Here.
Bill Helms.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does the term call. Please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving into the presentation of the conference of annual financial report. Anderson.
Thank you, President. Good afternoon or evening, I guess we're kind of in the middle. I want to introduce Tracy Bruegerman from Brady Mart's office, and she's actually located in Thief River Falls, so it's a joint effort between the Thief River Falls office and the Grand Forks office. So she will present the CAFRA today, and she will present the Water and Light Report, which is also here at your seat tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. if you want to come and listen to her present at the Water and Light meeting. Go ahead, Tracy.
First, I'd like to say thank you for hiring Brady Martz, and secondly, I'd like to thank the city staff for their assistance during our audit. On page seven is the independent auditor's report. The city received an unmodified opinion, which is the same opinion they received in the prior year. In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, and the changes in financial position for the year ended in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. On page 22 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. The general fund balance increased $588,000 and ended the year with a fund balance of The capital project fund balance increased $207,000 and ended the year with a fund balance of $551,000. The current city projects' fund balance increased $52,000 and ended the year with a fund balance of $132,000. The 2017 Assessment Bonds Fund Balance increased $148,000 and ended the year with a fund balance of $684,000. The 2007 Assessment Bonds Fund Balance decreased $1,584,000 and ended the year with a fund balance of $915,000. The sales tax pool fund balance increased $784,000 and ended the year with a deficit fund balance of $1,171,000. The non-major governmental fund balances decreased $27,000 and ended the year with a fund balance of $3,493,000. On page 27 is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for the enterprise funds. The electric fund had income before transfers and contributions of $962,000, and the electric fund had a transfer out of $289,000. The water fund had income of $303,000. The sewage fund had income before contributions of $167,000. The stormwater fund had a loss of $116,000. The commercial properties had a loss of $8,000. The refuse fund had income of $15,000, and the internal service fund had income of $165,000. On page 38 is the note for cash and investments. Cash and investments are approximately $1,900,000 more than the prior year. As of December 31st, cash and investment balance was $32,436,356. On page 124 is our report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters, and we noted no instances of non-compliance. On page 126 is our report on compliance for each major federal program and on internal control over compliance required by the Uniform Guidance. We audited the Highway Planning and Construction Grant, and the results of our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance. So in addition to your report, the Office of the State Auditor recommends an unrestricted fund balance of 35% to 50% of the operating revenue, and the general fund unrestricted fund balance is 54% of revenue. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions at this time? See none?
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you do have questions, you can always call me or see me, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to open forum. An opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may refer to staff, boards, commissions for research, and future council agendas. If appropriate, if you'd like to address the City Council, please come up to the podium to do so at this time. I see none. Move on to approval minutes for the July 2nd council meeting, July 9th special meeting, and July 9th work session.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Riappell. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bid lettings, none. Scheduled public hearings. Public hearing, consider the final plat or replat of Outlet 1, auditor's plat of Outlets 1 through 23.
Move to open a hearing.
Move by Demers.
Yep.
Second by Grassel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We're now, public hearing is now open. Nancy Ellis.
Thank you, President Olsted. Council members, this is what we call a simple subdivision. It's just the separation of two, or of one lot into two lots. It's on our highway commercial zoning district on the north end of Highway 220. So it has Third on one side of it, 220 Frontage Road on the east side, and then 23rd Street Northwest on the north. He's splitting it down the middle. Each will have access to a public right-of-way. Buildings will remain the same. Uses will remain the same. We don't really have any specific lot size or width or length dimensions that need to be followed, so at this point in time, they're in conformance with our zoning ordinance. One thing that I would mention is that while we're splitting those lots, we're asking that we can obtain a 10-foot easement that'll run along the south property line on both lots, both of the new lots, so that we do have an easement for any future utilities that may need to go in there. There are some high-power voltage lines that kind of run north-south along each lot. Rather than obtain easements for those, because there are buildings and it does kind of take away building square footage or like parking lot area, storage areas, we're just asking that those are shown on the plat, and then once, we will obtain an agreement, a legal agreement, that he'll allow us to be able to access those power lines, maintain those, do work on those. At such time when we want those changed out or need to be removed, we will then place that utility into the utility easement. So rather than taking the easement, we're just going to ask for an agreement that we can maintain those until such time it's replaced, and then the replacement will go in the easement that we're taking on this current plat. So Mr. Schultz is here. If you have any questions for him, otherwise, if you have any questions for me in regards to the split.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Ellis? I see none, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Helms. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The public hearing is now closed. Move on to consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted. One motion, however, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. May members like 5 through 12 hold out.
Move on 5 through 12.
Motion to move on 5 through 12, 5 through 12 from Mr. Helms.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Demers. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledged and received reports of officers, boards, and commissions, regular meeting minutes, and minute summary of the Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission for June 19th, 2019. Communication, there's none. Old business, there is none. Move on to new business. Number 14, consider approving adopting resolution number 19-07-46, awarding the contract to Johnson Controls Inc. for the HVAC system renovation at the Public Works Building for a total of $178,690, and authorize staff to execute the contract.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Grassel. Any questions or discussion? See none. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 15, consider adopting resolution number 19-07-47, awarding the contract to Johnson Controls Inc. for the replacement of the air conditioning unit at the Campbell Library for a total of $75,690, and authorize staff to execute the contract.
Move.
Move by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 16, consider adopting resolution number 19-07-48, awarding the contract to Johnson Controls Inc. for the HVAC system renovation at the VFW Arena for a total of $87,695, and authorize staff to execute the contract.
Move.
Move by Riappell.
Sorry.
Second by Grassel. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 17, consider adopting resolution number 19-07-49, showing support for the Lefave Park Improvement Application for the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Grant Funding and Local Match Commitment of 25%.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Mayor Gander.
Just one to follow back on the conversation that we had, Mr. Demers' idea of pulling out the boat ramps and going back now to the DNR for 100% coverage of those. If we could read whenever you decide for the staff changes and everything that happened there, to move fairly decisively on that could even happen ahead of this process with a little bit of luck, and I'll be happy to be part of it, and I think you will, too, anyone else. See if we can get that to move. Thanks, Megan, for putting together the documents that you could find. If anyone else has anything to show that commitment, be very helpful from the DNR to do the boat ramps.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I haven't had a chance to look through my own records yet, but, and part of the problem is both the city administrator at that time and the park and rec director at that time are no longer, you know, in the city right now, so I was going to reach out to both of them to see what they had. Because, like I said, I remember very clearly the meeting, and like I said, I'd like to talk to Greg. I think he was at that meeting, too, and see if he has anything from that.
I did talk to Greg, and he didn't recall anything specifically.
Okay.
He doesn't know really why. Everything just kind of got dropped and what happened, so.
Okay. The other question I have is, where are we? I know we approved some clearing up of the plats and those type of things down there. Is that completed?
That's not completed at that time. That's something that's in the works. Mr. Olsted's doing some title opinion work right now.
We might want to express or try to see how fast we can get moving on some of that stuff, specifically the stuff right at the boat ramp.
I've got everything pulled. I've got a title opinion that I've already done specifically regarding that location. That location specifically shows that the city owned it. I did do that title opinion back in 2011, I believe it was, surrounding this whole discussion regarding getting the boat ramp. I did go through my files regarding any type of a meeting. I do have a couple of emails that I can share. I'll just leave it at that. I do have all the documents pulled for, we'll just call it the Lefave Park area. What I'm doing with that right now is I'm assembling them all per lot or block, and then I'm finishing up a title opinion that shows that we actually own all those properties.
Perfect. Thank you. And I, like I said, I just know that's not specifically true into this, but it's kind of tangentially, if we're trying to fast-track that stuff, that is one of the hurdles that we've had.
That's what we ran into, that you can't secure the funding if you don't have clear title of the property, so yeah, that's a good step.
So, and like I said, I do support this. I'd support a bigger project, but I think this is a prudent first step, and I think, you know, the revised report of, what, $82,000 over, what, three years is very doable for the city, you know, especially if we're showing 4% over our reserve right now, so I think this is going to, hopefully, be a great project that we can get, so good luck in getting it out the door on time and getting it, and hopefully, we can secure those funds. Thank you.
Any else have any? Mr. Helms.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the guys who've been involved in putting this together. I like the concept of it, I really do, but I think back and I'm looking as I cross that bridge right now, where would we be with this stuff? Are we wasting money? That's what I'm worried about. Where would we be right now, today? We don't know. Any given day, that river can flood, wipe out all this stuff, and it just bothers me. I really like the idea. I just have a hard time because of seeing what's going on right now down there at that river. I think there's probably other ways we could make that look a little nicer, you know, if we just, you know, took a moor down there and mowed down along the river and get some of those weeds down and just kind of spruce it up and clean it up a little bit, and we could still make it look pretty nice without putting a whole lot of money into it. I hate to be the devil of the thing, but that's the way I feel about it, and I'm, you know, so I guess I'm not, I don't think I can support it.
Any else? Mr. Helms. Mr. Helms, anything else?
No, I'm done.
Mr. Better.
Thank you. Are you applying for just Phase 1, or are you applying for the whole thing?
What you guys would be voting on tonight is basically, under the engineer's estimate of costs, it's broken kind of into three phases. Phase 1A, Phase 1B, and Phase 2. We'd be looking at only Phase 1B under, that's the only thing that I would be applying for, is those funds under Phase 1B, which is kind of support area surrounding the boat ramp and parking lot. So a lot of the work that could potentially take place under this grant application is a little bit contingent upon securing funding through other sources for the boat ramp and the parking lot, and that's just a little bit, we'll have to figure out in the next few days pretty quickly how to wordplay that, should you guys choose to go forward with us making an application, because really, the bulk of what's there is a few trail improvements through that area and an access road, improvements to the access road that lead to the parking lot. And I think if we don't have funding secured for the boat access and the parking lot, it wouldn't make much sense at this time to move forward with the other $327,000 or $387,000 worth, $327. So we have to figure out with that, too, and subsequent conversations a little bit, how we, so we don't put one foot in front of the other in the wrong sequence, so to speak. Maybe I said more than you asked there, but.
Well, it kind of sounds like you are putting the foot, one foot in front of the other first. I'm on the fence with this one, too. I mean, if we're not going to do the boat ramp, then why do Phase 1?
Right. And that's, I think, sorry, a lot of the discussion last week at the work session, and I tried to make clear is that I think in putting together this potential master plan, we're, I'm really trying to bring forward an option to you as the City Council to have this conversation and make a decision on, is there anything that we can accomplish? So if you guys say no to this tonight, by no means do I feel like you're saying no to me, and I hope you don't take it that I'm here asking you to do this. I'm here asking, as part of my role, to try to bring an option forward to it, to bring some information, and you all can make that decision. I, in a lot of ways, feel the same way as you. If I was sitting on the committee that's going to review these applications, and I don't see the local funding is lined up for the boat ramp and the boat access, I would ask on that committee why you'd ask for these funds, because it does seem like it's one in front of the other. I don't, I didn't have any discussions with the group, the selection committee, on whether or not they'd even have an interest in funding something like this at this time, but that's a lot of where my thoughts are, are probably a lot of what the same as yours are in that regard. I just wanted to make sure that we had some information here this week that we could discuss and have some input on, have some, I know it's not a work session, but have some of those thoughts just under the short timeline, because we're under a condensed window if we want to put an application forward at all.
Oh, yeah, I guess what I just wanted to say is, if the council does move forward with that, I know it's a pretty strict timeline. I would be more than happy to work with Reed on that to make sure that it's not taking too much time away from the rest of his duties, because I know he, it's really a busy time of the year for him with the pool going on and everything. But, yeah, I would want to get some sort of response from the DNR, whether they even have funding available for this at this particular point, because I do agree with Reed that if we don't have something going forward for the parking lot and the ramp, probably wouldn't get that, but I don't want to kibosh it either if that's really what the council wants to do, but I would think that, yeah, if we get a pretty strong message from the DNR that that's just not in their plans, and they don't have funding for it, then I would think we maybe need to rethink this.
Mayor Gander.
First of all, to Mr. Emery, a quick question, and that is, the elements that we've put in here, would they withstand a typical flood, whether a spring flood or a summer flood? Have we been intentional about designing it to withstand that?
Which features?
The features that we're planning to build into this.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, some of the things I'd maybe worry about most are some of the trees and, you know, stuff like that, but I think most of your, you know, your pavements, your walking paths, stuff like that, I mean, I think, you know, they would sustain the flooding events.
And then the other question is, for the phase that we have proposed in this action that we're considering, we should keep in mind, we already have a boat ramp there, right? So whatever we build around it, it supports the current boat ramp. It's not like it's just a shore right there. There's a boat ramp there already, and if we think it's inevitable that we're going to upgrade that boat ramp by some funding source in the next three to five years, then whatever we do surrounding that is still beneficial to that effort, right? So there's a boat ramp there now. It is our point of contact to the river for fishing and also for recreation. When I was out there for the cat fishing tournament a couple of weekends ago, we took a ride, we saw about a dozen kayaks up and down there. I understand they'll use this kayak launch, but it's becoming more and more of a recreation area, more than it ever was when I was a kid. I never remember seeing a boat go by. I grew up on that river, and it's just picking up more and more. And I think as a compliment to our campground, as a compliment to our, one of our main anchors, Cabela's Bass Pro, whatever we do to support that boat access, again, whether we use the current boat ramp or have to even wait several years to get the better one, it's not wasted. It's all toward embracing that river and making it easier to use it as a recreational element.
Reed, did you have something else you want to say?
Yeah, I just had one comment that I didn't, I neglected to add last week at the work session in regards to the boat ramp and some of the funding conversation. I would, probably this summer, last time, I met with a few representatives from the DNR to look at our current boat ramp and try to start some of this conversation about we need it replaced and it's beyond its time. And one of the representatives from the DNR that was there is a regional employee, relatively local, that has been with the DNR for many years, and we just talked about his recollection of what happened with the boat ramp and the funding in those years, and similar to some of the minutes that Megan dug up last week after the work session, his recollection was very similar to that in that sometime in that 2011 or '12 area, the DNR came to the city and was on board with the fact that we needed to replace the boat ramp and said, we have funding, and East Grand Forks is earmarked for funding to replace this boat ramp. Would you prefer that the city prepare the plans and specs, or would you like the DNR to handle it? And then, that's where his recollection of it goes a little bit gray, other than that he remembers that the city was going to take care of plans and specs, and when they were ready, they needed to be sent to the DNR to be approved, and that at that point, something happened that he doesn't recall that the DNR ever got plans and specs, and because of that, the DNR moved to the next project down the line in funding, because there were other projects that were shovel-ready, and that funding source that the DNR had to put in boat ramps throughout the state at that time is no longer available today. So basically said that you were on a list at one time, a list that no longer exists. There is not a list that the DNR keeps that says which community is in line next for a new boat ramp. So that's just, it was just a conversation recollection that I had with him, and he was trying to piece together a little bit, but if we're talking about maybe potential for that, that was the information that I got, which then led me to start going down the direction of some of this grant funding that we've been talking about.
Pearl.
I just, sorry to bring this up now, but, so in this grant application, is there any way that the DNR couldn't give money for this? Could we have the DNR maybe pay the match for the part that's, you know, dock? That we go for the whole project, and then we have them pay the match for that part of the project, so we can get the whole project done? Sorry to bring it up now, it just came to my head.
I could certainly look into that, but my guess would be no, because in the criteria for this, the legacy dollars are DNR earmarked dollars, but they're specifically earmarked within the legacies statute that they're not to be used for state property or state infrastructure. So basically, the DNR gets the responsibility to decide where these legacy dollars are used, but they're not allowed to use them for their own purposes or their own improvements. So I don't know that the DNR would say they'd give us the local match, because really, they're giving us the legacy dollars for the 75% part of it. That'd be my gut answer without looking into it.
Yeah, unless we could, unless the region, you know, the region do it, we'd be able to reimburse that, like we do in the end of the year.
I could certainly be looked at.
Because it would save them money, too.
Any else have any questions for Reed? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, I appreciate Reed's recollection, or reporting of someone's recollection, because that does closely mirror what mine is. You know, we did have a conversation about, you know, template designs from the DNR versus do, want WSN to do it, or all that kind of stuff, and I, I think at that time, got off the council, and so I quit following it. My question would be, is the list gone, or is the funding gone, or are they both gone? Because you said that there's no list. Is there still funding and it's just not prioritized on a, these are the top-ranked things that we're moving out, or?
The feeling I had from the conversation was that the list is gone because the funding is gone. The funding source they had to put in boat ramps doesn't exist anymore.
Well, the funding source was, was the, isn't it the licensing? Isn't it boat licensing?
That I don't know.
So, I mean, it's still there, it's just probably re-allocated.
Renamed. Any else have anything at this time? I see none. Roll call, please.
Johnson.[1720.83]
Johnson.
No.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
No.
Helms.
No.
Reapel.
Yes.
Four S's?
Yep, four to three.
Motion is carried. Number 18, consider approving the final plat or replat of Outlet 1, of others' plat of outlets 1 through 23, with filing conditions of including an access control line on north property lines bordering 23rd North Street Northwest. And easements where necessary, submit a digital file to the planning office and pay a fee to Polk County for recording.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Better. Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Reapel.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 19, consider authorizing a city administrative clerk treasurer to issue payment of recommended bills and payroll.
Move.
Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by reapel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Reapel.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
So it's been a bit of a dry spell. I'll take any and all nominations for Grindr Awards. Everybody remembers what those are. If you ever catch someone quietly and without fanfare making this community a better place, even you, Mr. Schultz, it could be you, please let me know. And I would love to recognize them with a Grindr Award. And again, these are folks that are, they're not drawing any attention to themselves, but they really are committed to making things better. And so I have here a note from Dave Tack, and Dave, you'll see, Oliver Francis from The Exponent asked me to write to you about my daughter, Gabby Tack. I introduced her to you at the Favorite Older Person Essay Contest a few weeks back, as she was one of the fourth grade winners from South Point. This is a young lady who's really, I think, taking advantage and making the most of everything we have to offer in this community. I'm really proud of her. Gabby's an incredible young lady whose heart is much larger than her body. Her body is not very large. She's a very cute young lady. She always thinks about helping others and always seems to do what she can to choose kindness, as her mother always reminds. My father and Gabby's grandfather, Larry Tack, Grandpa Larbear, passed away in February from a two-year battle with cancer. Yesterday, while I was at work, Gabby decided on her own to do a lemonade stand and donate all the proceeds to cancer research. We live on a street that is not heavily traveled, so I took a picture and posted it to Facebook, what she was doing. In four hours and in temps in the upper 80s, she went through four pitchers of lemonade, had visitors from as far away as Fisher and Fargo, and made $150 in cash and over $400 of online donations for the American Cancer Society, with more people sending her money in the mail for virtual glasses of lemonade. One gentleman stopped by and looked at her picture of Grandpa Larbear on the table. He spent a couple of minutes telling Gabby how her grandpa was always a great man to him back when grandpa sold machinery to local farmers, and how he was sad he couldn't make the funeral. He quietly handed Gabby a $100 bill and told her, "Thank you." Like everyone who came for lemonade, Gabby asked, "Can I give you a hug?" She did, and whispered a teary-eyed "thank you" right before the gentleman finished his cup and unassumingly drove away. Gabby wows me and everyone else on a daily basis with her selfless kindness, and I often have to remind myself and others that she's only 10. She doesn't do anything for recognition, and yesterday was a perfect example. It was a selfless act of generosity that everyone would say is very much Gabby. You do not need to award her for what she's doing, as yesterday she said, "This is all about grandpa." But I do want to thank you for taking interest in kids, doing kind gestures in our community. We really are lucky that there are so many great youth in this area. Again, many thanks. Gabby loved meeting you at the event, and I appreciated the time and interest you took in her. That wasn't lost on any of us. With much appreciation, David M. Tack, Ph.D. So we're really proud of Gabby and the love that she has for grandpa, and again, a nice example of kids in our community. We often say, you know, this next generation just doesn't get it, but certainly there are plenty in this next generation who really get it. We're here to enrich and serve other people. So I like that. And who saw it coming? But I think maybe Mrs. Wicker is going to be in line for one of these next. That's all I got.
Mr. Better.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Helms.
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Reapel.
Two things. I see Chief Larson is back there. I'd like to say thank you. You had a great PR idea. I guess Jeremy King brought it to your attention. We had a birthday party in the neighborhood with a fireman's theme. During that, all of a sudden, the fire truck shows up with a paramedic truck, and the kid's eyes got about that big, and they came out and told them, you know, firemen are your friends. We're here to help you. And they let them sit in the truck, play in the truck. Also, the adults that were there, probably close to 20 of them, were in a state of awe too when they saw our new fire truck. And when they found out how much it cost, they said things are a little more expensive than they used to be. But they were happy that we had that vehicle there. So Chief Larson, thank you for that. Good idea, and let's do it again. The other thing I'd like to do is the Polk County Senior Citizens of the Year, were a Mark Magnuson and a Gay Wick, both from Cruxton. Well, Gay happens to be my oldest sister, so I know she's watching, so I'm going to embarrass her a little bit and say, "I'm very proud of her, and I love you, sis." We also had a little meeting at the senior center, and we decided we're going to try to nominate a few of our seniors for next years. We think we've got a lot of seniors that do a lot of good in the community, whether it be at the service centers, with VFW Legion Eagles, or they're working at the churches, or donating their time at either the library or senior center and what have you. Without them, we'd be in a world of hurt in this community. So thank you to all the senior citizens, and let's get some of ours nominated for next year, so I can put the hammer down with my sister and tell her, "Look, East Grand Forks came to play this year." That's it.
Mr. Johnson.
I just wanted to thank all of the departments for the good work they've been doing. Public Works, you know, had to bring that dock up again, and then have to put it back in again for Catfish Days. There've been tree damage, whatnot, branches picking up, street cleaning. We haven't had to battle the mosquitoes like they have in Fargo now, but they'll be coming. And I want to thank you guys, you've done a good job.